Good evening and welcome to the City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of November 12th, 2019. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Here.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Councilmember Petron?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here. I'd like to invite PAC 233 from St. John's Episcopal Church to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh.
Scouts' attention?
Audience attention?
Please remove all non-religious heck here and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Troop 233, do you want to get a picture together real quick? Because this is going to be a long night, so we better do it now.
Absolutely.
And PAC parents, now at great time to bring yourselves down and grab some pictures.
All right, thanks again, gentlemen, delighted to have you here in City Hall.
Thank you.
Thank you. And one other thing before we begin tonight, you all may know, you all better know, it is Election Day in the city of Norman, and I want to personally thank this council for all the work that they've done to get this across the finish line, for better or worse. The little treats are from me. I appreciate all of you for making videos, to fielding comments in ward pages, to letters to the editor. We came together, and I'm super proud, and I appreciate all of you very much. So, with that, item number three, approval of the City Council Oversight Committee minutes of June 6th, 2019, City Council Finance Committee minutes of September 19th, 2019, and the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority minutes of October 8th, 2019. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the minutes passes unanimously.
Item four, proclamation 1920-20 proclaiming Wednesday, November 19th, 2019, as Women's Entrepreneurship Day in the city of Norman. And as soon as we find it, we will read. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved. Second?
The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming Tuesday, November 19th, 2019, as Women's Entrepreneurship Day in the city of Norman. Whereas, Women's Entrepreneurship Day Organization, Inc., a nonprofit organization named Diamond is a worldwide movement to celebrate, empower, and support women in business. And whereas, the mission of the Women's Entrepreneurship Day Organization, Inc., is to empower the four billion women worldwide to be catalysts of change and uplift the over 250 million girls living in poverty around the world. And whereas, women are a driving force in the city of Norman's growth and prosperity, and it is essential that we continue to promote their businesses and expand their access to resources. And whereas, when we empower our women and girls to innovate and start their own businesses, we open the door to better education and more opportunity and eliminate gender disparity. And whereas, the potential of the city of Norman to continue flourishing rises exponentially when we nurture the success of our women. And whereas, the city of Norman is proud to be a part of this global movement to foster, celebrate, and support the continued accomplishments of women entrepreneurs. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, November 19th, 2019, as Women's Entrepreneurship Day in the city of Norman, and invite all residents to commemorate and support the amazing things our women and girls are achieving every day. With that, I would like to invite Maureen Hammond to the dais to say a few words.
Did I say Maureen? Next, Maureen.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Entrepreneurship is an economic driver in our community. Startups create businesses, attract investment, develop innovative ways of doing things, and create jobs. In fact, all new net jobs are generally created by young and new businesses. As a community, we need to provide resources and encourage a business climate that supports and encourages new ventures. This proclamation signifies the city and the community's recognition of our women entrepreneurs, excuse me, and our diversified community. Thank you for this recognition.
Thank you so much. And I am honored to say that I am sitting at the dais with a few women entrepreneurs, so it's an exciting day. Speaking of, Councilmember Wilson?
I would just like to say thank you to everybody, Maureen Hammond, for all the work you do, and I see a bunch of other faces. As a female, and a business owner, and a woman who collaborates with another well-known woman at this dais, that I really appreciate the efforts that are being put in our community, that are done in our community to support businesses like mine, and women like me who don't know what they're doing in the very first days of the business. I know that there's a lot of faces in here that's helped me a lot with my businesses and our businesses, so thank you to this community for being very progressive in that way.
Item number five, the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items six through 43 on the consent docket.
So moved.
Second?
The motion on the floor is to place items six through 43 on the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast. The consent docket passes unanimously.
Item six, ordinance 1920-10 upon first reading. Rezoning property located at 325 East Tonewa Street from R3 multifamily dwelling district to C3 general commercial district to allow for a parking lot. Item seven, ordinance 1920-13 upon rezoning property located at 223 McCullough Street from Center City Form-Based Code Neighborhood Middle Frontage to CCPUD Center City Planned Unit Development District. Item eight, ordinance 1920-17 upon first reading. Requesting special use for a medical marijuana processor for property located at 1304 Lindsay Plaza Drive, currently zoned C2 General Commercial District. Item nine, ordinance 1920-19 upon first reading. Requesting special use for a medical marijuana processor for property located at 109 East Tonewa Street Suite 120, currently zoned C3 Intensive Commercial District. Item 10, ordinance 1920-22 upon first reading. Rezoning property located at the northeast corner of 12th Avenue Southeast and Cobblestone Creek Drive from R1 Single Family Dwelling District to PUD Planned Unit Development District. Item 11, ordinance 1920-23 upon first reading. Closing a 210-platted front building line for Lot 2 Block 1 Jennings Estate Number 1 Edition, a replat of a part of Block 1 Jennings Estate Number 1 Edition. Item 12, mayor's appointment to the Norman Forward Adult Softball Football Facility Ad Hoc Group, Green Belt Commission, and Historic District Commission. Item 13, submission of the city manager's change order report. Item 14, bid contract with H&amp;H Plumbing and Utilities, Inc. in the amount of $1,419,460 and associated bonds for Phase 4 24-inch water transmission line from Timberdale Road and Chautauqua Avenue to Jenkins Avenue and Constitution. Item 15, bid contract with Central Contracting Services, Inc. in the amount of $341,839 and associated bonds for the Urban Concrete Pavement FYE 2020 Locations Project 2. Item 16, bid contract with Central Contracting Services, Inc. in the amount of $302,155 and associated bonds for the Urban Concrete Pavement FYE 2020 Locations Project 3. Item 17, acceptance of a permanent sidewalk easement from David A. Hutner Revocable Trust in the amount of $2,474 for the 24th Avenue Northwest and T-Drive-T-Circle Signalization and Intersection Widening Project. Item 18, certificate of plot correction for Highland Village Edition Section 7, Lots 7, 8, 14, and 15 Block 3. Item 19, consent to encroach for Lot 10 Block 5 Sutton Place Number 2 Edition, aka 208 Wilderness Drive. Item 20, donation in the amount of $1,000 from Community Solutions International to assist in efforts to address homelessness in the city of Norman and budget appropriation. Item 21, donation in the amount of $1,000 from the Legacy Rotary Club to be used by the Police Department for the Homeless Resource Expo. Item 22, donation of two compressors and associated equipment valued at $5,000 from Reno Partners to be stored at the North Base Fleet Facility to be used as repair parts for the city's CNG facility. Item 23, acceptance of a grant in the amount of $91,500 from the Oklahoma Highway Safety Office to be used by the Police Department to conduct high-visibility enforcement, high-visibility saturation patrols, information education campaigns directed towards traffic safety, and participation in Oklahoma Highway Safety Office mobilizations, approval of a contract, and budget appropriation from the special grants fund balance. Item 24, authorization for expenditure number three under the contract with Smith Roberts Land Services, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $130,116 to provide right-of-way acquisition services under an all-call-on-call contract for the 36th Avenue Northwest Phase 2. Item 25, amendment number two to the contract with PDG increasing the contract amount by $120,000 for a revised contract amount of $1,311,280 to provide additional professional architectural services for the Griffin Park Sports Complex. Item 26, change order number two to the contract with RDNJ Doing Business as A-Tech Paving decreasing the contract amount by $43,896.82 for a revised contract amount of $574,904.7 for the LaHoma Avenue Reconstruction Project from Gray Street to Nebraska Street, and final acceptance of the project. Item 27, change order number two to the contract with RDNJ Doing Business as A-Tech Paving decreasing the contract amount by $42,851.49 for a revised contract amount of $334,545.51 for the LaHoma Avenue Reconstruction Project from Nebraska Street to Hubert Street, and final acceptance of the project. Item 28, amendment number one to the contract with Kabinist Engineering increasing the contract amount by $7,700 for a revised contract amount of $133,600 to provide project design, bidding, and construction administration for the Parsons Edition Waterline Replacement Project and budget appropriation from the water fund balance. Item 29, contract with Stan Tech Consulting Services in the amount of $274,022.31 to provide professional engineering services for the design of a new traffic management center. Item 30, a public transit revolving fund agreement contract with Oklahoma Department of Transportation, excuse me, distributing funds in an amount not to exceed $134,285.3 payable on or after November 1st, 2019, on or after February 15th, 2020, and on or after June 1st, 2020, to be used for establishing, expanding, improving, and maintaining the city's urban public mass transportation services and authorizing the city manager or his designated to execute the requisite certification for competitive bid and/or contract, the status verification system affidavit, and/or any other required documents executing the purposes of and in compliance with the agreement. Item 31, a fund disbursement agreement contract with the Norman Regional Hospital Authority providing the annual payment of $50,000 payable quarterly for paratransit services. Item 32, contract with Cardinal Engineering in the amount of $81,500 to provide professional engineering services for final design, bidding, and construction management of the water transmission lines associated with the FYE 2015 Waterwells and Supply Lines Project between 48th Avenue Northeast and 108th Avenue Northeast near Tecumseh Road. Item 33, resolution selecting H.W. Lochner as the city's appointed bridge inspection consultant to the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for compliance with the national bridge inspection standards. Item 34, resolution appropriating $457,957 from the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund Balance, $669,702 from the CDBGDR grant revenue, $1,433 from the Room Tax Fund Balance, $3,440 from the Capital Fund Balance, and $13,249 from the Sewer Line Maintenance Fund Balance to close out year-end accounting entries for FYE 2019. Item 35, resolution appropriating $60,000 from the Room Tax Fund Balance for the renovation of the outdoor tennis courts at the 12th Avenue Recreation Center. Item 36, resolution appropriating $14,625 from the Neighborhood Park Land Fund Balance for improvements to Summit Lakes Park. The following six resolutions are programming requests for Federal Service Transportation Block Grant Program Urbanized Area Funds for the following projects. Item 37, roadway improvements along Constitution Street between Jenkins Avenue and Claussen Boulevard. Item 38, a new traffic management center. Item 39, roadway improvements along 24th Avenue Northeast between Rock Creek and Tecumseh Road. Item 40, roadway improvements along Lindsay Street Phase 3 between Pickard Avenue and Elm Avenue. Item 41, for roadway improvements along Lindsay Street Phase 4 between Elm Avenue and Jenkins Avenue. Item 42, for roadway improvements along Rock Creek Road between Queenston Avenue and 24th Avenue Northeast. Item 43, a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit a Watersmart Cooperative Watershed Management Program Phase 1 Grant Application to the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
So moved.
Second?
Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? The renovations for the 12th Avenue Rec. Center outdoor tennis courts are for pickleball. Councilmember Holman?
Would, thank you, could a representative from the Police Department come up and talk about item number 23, please? There's Chief Foster out there.
23.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
I just wanted to see if you could elaborate on item number 23, the acceptance of a grant of $91,500 from the Oklahoma Highway Safety.
Highway Safety. Yeah, that's an annual grant that we get to do various things, usually saturation patrol, seatbelt enforcement, things like that, just for traffic safety issues.
Is the goal to inform and educate the public?
Part of the goal is to inform and educate.
So not just out writing tickets and trying to get people?
Yeah. A lot of their money is to write tickets.
Sure.
But some of it is to educate, and we try to do that through our data-driven approaches to crime and traffic safety program.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it.
Any other questions from councilmembers regarding the consent agenda? Councilmember Petron?
I was just going to ask a follow-up. It says that it's for overtime. Does that cover the overtime that we accrue?
Yes. Some of the overtime that you'll see that we use during the year, part of it is reimbursed through that grant. Part of it is reimbursed through OU, different things like that. We do get reimbursed for some.
Okay. So for that program specifically, though, that covers the overtime cost?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no other comments from council regarding any other items on the consent docket, the motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast. The consent docket passes unanimously.
And we move on to off-consent. Item 44, consideration of a preliminary plat from Avara Phase 1 at the southwest corner of Highway 9 and 12th Avenue Southeast. I will entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
So moved.
Second?
For the applicant to make a presentation.
Good evening. My name is Ricky RC. I'm with Cardinal Engineering, 3700 West Robinson here in Norman. I'm the representative for Avara Pharmaceuticals, and in their petition to approve the preliminary plat. This preliminary plat is really a replat of Lot 1 of their existing plat, and it's just to add an additional lot to that addition. So the reason they're doing that is so they can sell the excess land they have on the east side of their property.
Okay. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments? Seeing none. Are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Holman?
Hello. Just going to say, I appreciate the community partner that Avara has been. Former Mayor Miller and I had the opportunity to partially tour the facility two years ago, and it's really pretty impressive, and it's been there, the facility itself has been there as long as I can remember, so my entire lifetime. So I appreciate everything they do in Norman, so thank you.
Okay. The motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast. The consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item 45, ordinance 1920-1, rezoning property located at 2505 West Main Street from C2 General Commercial District to SPUD, Simple Planned Unit Development. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a representative for the applicant to make a presentation?
Broadway, Oklahoma City, for the applicant. He's got all those slides up there. Am I going the wrong, going the wrong way? All right. This is a rezoning request to rezone this property from C2 General Commercial District to a simplified planned unit development. The property was located at 2505 West Main Street. The site is approximately 3.16 acres. The existing structure is just almost 39,000 square feet. The current use is an automobile motorcycle shop dealership repair and a detail shop. The current zoning is C2 General Commercial. The proposed zoning is a SPUD to allow all permitted uses in C2 and medical marijuana processing facility. Current land use is commercial. This is the location, it's just east of I-35, the old Mitsubishi Yamaha Motorcycle Dealership. And that's the existing zoning, C2, and existing land use is commercial. And this is looking north, and that is looking north also. That's looking west, down Main Street towards I-35. There's looking south across the street to the car wash, and back looking east down Main Street. There's behind, I think that's what, actually northwest behind the property. There's quite a lot of industrial back there, commercial north, so that's what it looks like north of there. I think that's the old, where the old recycling used to be, and of course, those are the other buildings there. Under the current city ordinance, in general commercial, they can have a dispensary, and they've also already have an application pending, I believe it's about complete, for a dispensary. But in order to process or have research, we'd have to have a special use. And how we came here today and stayed with the SPUD is initially, our original application was for a SPUD to do medical marijuana growing and processing. And the background on that is, it's pre-development, nobody attended other than the applicant and the staff. But when we went to planning commission, while there's no protest in the notification area, the neighbors from Normandy Creek showed up and voiced their concerns. And so the comments were about the odor from the grow operation. That's when you look back through the letters and the planning commission meetings, it was all concern about a big grow operation. And the grow operation was going to be, take up more space than this processing. And so as a result, we stepped back and came back. While we could just come forward with special use, rather than starting over, we just removed the grow component from the application. The dispensary is already going to be there. It's allowed by right, and C2 in the application is in the process. The processing in this case will be self-contained. They actually intend to use only about 2,000 square feet of that structure for processing, and that's 5% or less of the square footage. So it's going to be a very, very, very small component, and certainly this use is not more intensive than the current use. The staff supports the application. That's one of the machines that they use. That's how small it is. And it's hard to tell if I can use the pointer here. There is an area right down here where they want to put it in one of those small ones, or they may put it up in the larger, but they're going to build a room. As I said, it may not even be anywhere near 2,000 square feet, but that's what they intend, no more than 2,000 square feet. As I said, there's a subject tract. There was no protest in the tract, and of course, the protests were across the street, six lanes of traffic, and there's commercial buildings there, and then it gets into Normandy Creek. And we certainly, we listened to the planning commission, and the neighbors were real concerned about a large grow facility there, so we took that component out. Quite frankly, I mean, there's a sign up there now. I noticed when I was over here, they've gotten their sign up for the dispensary. It's, you know, it is compliant with the code. It's smaller than a lot of the signs over there for the dispensaries. You're not even going to know this operation's there. There will be no signage for it because it's just going to be a small component of this, you know, north of the process, I mean, north of the dispensary. So it's just a, be a very small component. So, have questions, comments? Like I said, staff supports this. If you look back through the minutes and the letters that were received, it was all about the big grow facility. So that's why we removed it, and rather than start back over, we came through with this. And you've got a couple others. So I understand that you've approved a processing just over here at Gray Street, I think with the pad. If James was here, I'd confirm that, I think. So we'd ask for your support. Have any questions?
Thank you. I appreciate you being there. Responsive to concerns from neighbors.
Okay.
Are there any comments from council or questions regarding this item? Councilmember Beerman?
I've got a couple questions for you. Have you removed, or maybe this is a question for staff. I'll let you all decide who to answer. Have you removed growing from the SPUD application?
Yes. Well, it's from the SPUD document, yes.
Okay. So now it is just for processing?
Yeah, correct. Correct.
And this, I think, is a question for staff. Does the SPUD stay with the building regardless of who applied for the SPUD?
The SPUD is a function of zonings. It will stay
It will stay regardless of who the property owner is. If someone wanted to come in and change that in the future, they would have to get a change in zoning or amend the Spud.
So barring any further council action, if we approve this tonight, we are basically approving a processing facility on Main Street?
Correct.
Unless we take further action?
Correct.
Okay. And then my last question is, what, what do we, what protections do we have built into this Spud that maybe the next occupant would not be nearly as considerate or understanding as these applicants in terms of ensuring the closed HVAC system and the smallness of the processing equipment? You know, what protections do we have that?
The Spud document binds its own zoning. And any restrictions in the Spud document are gonna apply to whoever comes along also, yes.
But someone else could maybe not be as discerning and scrupulous as the current occupant and?
Well, that's the way it is with any zoning. If somebody comes along, buys a property, and uses it inconsistent with its current zoning, that's an enforcement problem, obviously. But no, the Spud document, the restrictions, as city attorney will tell you, run with the property.
Right. Yeah, my concern is that maybe the next, you know, say for some reason, you decide they outgrow this facility and need to move somewhere else, that someone else could come in and not be, not be quite as careful with their odors or emissions or their HVAC system. That's really more of my concern, which is why these zoning cases, we'd have to look at them really carefully.
I understand.
Yes, and I thought your question was more specifically about what's contained in the Spud. The Spud says that all proposed processing activities will be contained within the structure. The windows will be closed with concrete block. And the HVAC units will all be outfitted with carbon filters to ensure no odors are released from the structure. So even if a future user came in with a similar type activity, they would be bound by this language.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilor Petrum?
Hi. Is the car dealership staying?
Yeah, well, they intend, and the, and the south part of this property is gonna maintain its commercial zoning. But as far as I know, they're not gonna use it as car dealership, maybe a portion of it, some related activities. And they have a detail shop and repair shop and the motorcycle. But, you know, obviously, now that could go away. They're not, they can't, they're not gonna expand this processing into that whole thing. That's not the way that's gonna work. But I don't know, obviously, you know, the market may change. I'm not sure what they intend to do with that in the long term. You know, right now, motorcycles and cars, they're gonna have this dispensary. It doesn't take up the whole structure. Like I said, it's almost thirty-nine thousand square feet, so it's got various uses. And it could be used for any number, any of the general commercial uses now without coming to council and ask for that, so.
Right.
I can't predict the future, what they'll do with the, with the property.
Would you mind pulling back up the map, please?
Is that the best one right there?
Okay, so I'm just trying to understand, when you drive by now, there's a sign up, like with the car dealership?
Correct.
And I've, I've even had people say, so what's up? You get a free bag of weed when you buy a car? Like, what's, what's happening here exactly?
Well, like I said, they've got the sign up for the dispensary. Right now, they still have the auto.
Where's the dispensary in relation to the car lot?
It is to the, the dispensary will be the, to the east of where it is. You might, this is Tom, and he's involved in this. Sorry, going the wrong way.
Tom, can you fully introduce yourself, please?
Yes, my name's Tom Drummond. I live at fifteen oh-three Lindell Circle here in Norman, Oklahoma.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Sorry, I'm a little bit late. I overheard the question that was being asked a moment ago about what's going on currently.
Can you speak into the microphone, please? I'm sorry.
I heard the question a moment ago about what's being done at the facility right now with the signage and so forth that's up. Excuse me, I rushed a little bit to get here. Currently, on the west side of the building, where the red portion is there in the photograph, that side is currently Oklahoma Motor Cars Used Car Lot. And it will remain that after the dispensary is opened. We'll partition the parking lot using large concrete blocks to separate and delineate where the dispensary property is versus the used car lot. Does that help answer your question?
Perhaps. Are you basically saying that where the Mitsubishi motor sign is now will be a dispensary?
That will all be dispensary showroom.
And how big is that?
It's about three thousand square feet.
Okay.
There will also be a wellness center. There'll also be an area where there'll be some other activities, things like Tai Chi, yoga, and so forth.
In the same Mitsubishi area?
In that, in that portion of the building. It'll be on the west end of that room.
Okay, so the, I just wanna make sure I understand, like, the four-wheelers, that stuff's staying on the other side, but it's not gonna be a car lot anymore?
No, and it's in, and that's a completely different building. It was actually built beside that. So there's a full partition wall there that screens those two buildings and separates them completely.
Okay. And then Eviana, is that the name of your corporation?
It is the corporation that we work under, yes.
Okay. I noticed that it built, it bought this property in twenty thirteen. Any relation to the Eviana Cannabis multinational corporation?
The, I saw that, I did a search just out of curiosity and saw the company. I believe it's in Sarajevo. No, it has no association with us, none at all.
And what do you plan to do with your processing?
With processing, what we're looking to do, or what we're hoping to do, is have a kitchen where we'll do baked goods and the like. We'll also have some equipment that will facilitate that. One of them will be an ethanol extraction machine. What it does is help separate out the THC oil so that it can then be used in the cooking process. But by and large, we're gonna be, we're gonna be baking brownies and making cookies and stuff like that.
Okay. On the ethanol side of it, I think my question would be for Jane.
Well, if it helps, ethanol extraction is one of the easiest extractions to perform and one of the safer ways to perform extraction on cannabis. There are several other methods that can be used, one being CO2, the other being hydrocarbons. Those hydrocarbons can include butane and propane. We're not interested in using those processes. We're, if we use a process, it'll either be heat and pressure or it'll be an ethanol extraction with basically Everclear, hundred proof or two-hundred proof alcohol, which is pretty easy to handle.
Well, while we wait for Jane, maybe I can ask her counsel here. Oh, there she is. My question's two-part. Okay, so we've had all these different tiers on processing, Jane. And one of them was, you know, whether you're processing with water and ice versus chemicals? What would this fall under?
So I don't believe the tiers are currently adopted. Are you talking about the tiers that present?
The tier conversation, I guess. And this one, I asked what he was gonna be using to process, and he said the ethanol. Or maybe he can speak more to it. But I'm wondering if that applies to the conversations that we've had on the different tiers of processing, what that would put him in.
I'm not sure I can answer that. The tiers haven't been adopted yet. I think they're actually maybe on your agenda this Thursday at CPTC or Oversight Committee, this Thursday. But, so, so they don't apply yet? If you're asking how they would apply in the future, of course, whatever zoning's approved tonight would be in place, and they would be grandfathered in likely. And so the tiering system wouldn't apply if this is adopted.
Okay. And the ones prior, I think we put a restriction on it.
Yeah, in previous applications recently, we've added language to the special use ordinance to say, you know, that extracting is limited to a certain kind or the processing's limited to a certain kind of processing. And that if, if tiers are to be implemented or future changes are made, they would have to seek another license. And so that may be what you're thinking of.
Okay, thank you. And then my understanding is this did not pass planning. Could you speak to that, what it was that the planning commissioners found objectionable?
The, some of the neighbors that showed up were concerned with the grow that was proposed there at the facility. They were also concerned with the fact that this being the location it is at the gateway coming in off of I-35 and Main Street there, that was some of the comments that they had. They just didn't want that to be the first thing that people saw when they came into Norman.
What was the vote at planning?
I'll have to look at it.
It gives two to four. But, councilmember, I wanna make it clear, I mean, they have a dispensary there now. That sign they have is for the dispensary. There will be no signage for the processing. So that is already as a matter of right. And so that, some of the comments, you know, were that this is the gateway. But like I said, you won't even know the processing parts there as far as the facility. And the sign's already there. I saw it for the first time tonight. I wished I had a picture. I didn't realize it was already up. Or I would have included a picture in this. And it's very small, so.
Okay, was, I have a picture actually too. But was that two in favor and four against at planning or the opposite?
As I recall, it's in the, yeah.
It was two to four.
Was it two to four?
I think I wanna hear some public comments before I'm...
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Wilson?
I guess my question is for legal staff. There are mechanisms in place that prevent this organization from, once they get the special use permit, or Spud, I guess. What are we getting? We're getting a Spud tonight. That they cannot then be like, well, now we wanna grow in the other thirty thousand square foot of this building. Am I correct in that understanding?
That is correct. The only thing the Spud grants them is a right to a processing facility in addition to what's already existing there as a dispensary.
And we have mechanisms to inspect yearly?
Correct. It's part of the licensure process.
And in that inspection, would our inspectors be looking for the things contained within the Spud? Whatever they've asked for here?
Yes, they'd be looking for compliance, but primarily probably looking at the extraction equipment and things like that to make sure all of the safety measures have been employed.
And then, one last question. If the neighbors are all getting high or something from all the fumes or some crazy, I don't know. I'm not a, I know that even though it's possible. But the things that they're worried about, like odors, are a problem and they complain, the city can then, what's the recourse the city has?
It's through our nuisance ordinance. So if it's creating a public nuisance, that's something that we could proceed forward with an enforcement action for.
And then, this is a silly question, but do we have a snifferator?
No.
Is that a thing?
I'm not sure.
I'm naming it that, just in case there is, not invented yet, call it the snifferator. Because I'm curious, because we've had sound ordinance problems where we didn't have a mechanism for measuring that. So then I'm wondering if we, as a city, can measure smell?
To my knowledge.
I have a doggy daycare, so I'm curious.
To my knowledge, that technology does not exist.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Are there any other questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none, this is an opportunity. Oop, you snuck in, Councilmember Hall.
I wanted to expand a little bit on the inspection process. So who, who, where, where does that happen in the city staff process?
It's part of the licensure process. So they have to get an initial license to operate the facility. And then they have an annual license renewal, which is subject to inspection as well.
And then, when those inspections are made, are those available for public review?
I believe they would be, whatever the reports are.
Okay. I also have a question, I think, for Mr. Nice. I, this is more of a general nature of the use of PUDs and Spuds. So the statement of purpose for a simple planned unit development is to encourage developments with a superior-built environment brought about through unified development, and to provide for the application of design ingenuity in such developments while protecting existing and future surrounding areas and achieving the goals of a comprehensive plan of record. In addition, it encourages efficient, innovative use of land in the placement and/or clustering of buildings in a development, and to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. So could you speak to how this particular project measures up to encouraging a superior-built environment?
Well, one of the things, and I think some of this came up at the planning commission, as I said previously, since we took, the reason we came forward as a Spud is because we could not have the grow facility as a special use. So the only mechanism was a Spud. And we came forward that, that way because the Spud, as the city attorney would advise you, Jane, you know, it's its own zoning, and you can put in restrictions you couldn't under straight zoning. And you can allow things that you couldn't allow under straight zoning. So it gives you a method to address those things and kind of fashion its own zoning. But when we went forward, and as I said, the neighbors, while there were no protests in the official area from the commercial businesses around there, the Normandy Creek people came out, and we understood that, and we listened to that. So we took that out. And that's when staff said, you know, you can, since this is less intensive than your original application, you can see that way. So I believe it does, it limits us, the document. Like I said, it's its own zoning. And as Ms. Walker's already said, somebody can't come along and expand that use. They can't start growing. They can't do anything else there. I mean, we do already have dispensary as a matter of right. This just adds this one use. But it also keeps the general commercial uses there so that they will be ongoing. But it's a, you know, here in the city of Norman, and I've been various cities, each city uses them a little differently. As I recall, some, you know, Jeff Rayly sitting here, thirty-something years ago, we didn't even do these, as I recall. They were new. And so they've gotten to be fairly common, do I? Fairly common in order to facilitate a way to, you know, to restrict things or allow things you couldn't in a straight zoning. So I think it, it serves a purpose in this case, so.
So how does this contribute to the superior-built environment piece of the project?
Well, I, I don't know that I have a great answer for that, quite frankly, Ms., councilmember. I'm saying this restricts this use just to that one use other than what's in the general commercial zoning, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Are there any additional questions from council regarding this item? All right, seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name's Evan Dunn. I live at fourteen hundred Garfield Avenue in Mr. Holman's Ward Number Seven, and I voted today.
Thank you.
At what point does a dispensary that's selling plants become a grow? Ten plants, twenty plants?
I think it's when they start growing for a commercial purpose. It's different from the state laws provisions related to growing for a personal use.
So that'd be more than six plants, then?
I believe it would be.
Okay, thank you. If I were in your positions, I would approve this.
Thank you. Are there any public, any, thank you.
Paul Arcerole, four oh five Garland Court. I was at the planning commission when all this was going on. And it was a very lively debate, and I think a lot of good information was had. One of the things that struck me and may be relevant to this conversation was the conversation about the PUDs and the appropriateness for this. There was an attorney that did present and suggested that it was not appropriate to use a PUD in this environment. There's nothing unique about this property. It may be the greatest dispensary in town, and it may be great for processing. I'm less confident that growing would also happen there. I do have concerns about the front door of Main Street. I think this is, I'm worried about the future of retail development in the area, believe it or not. And I think that if you allow this, that, that may adversely affect that side of the street. If you look at the other side of the street, there was a dealership over there, and that's been redeveloped, a lot more commercial, a lot more tax capturing. I'd like to see that on the other side. I think if you convert this, that may prevent that from happening. So taking out the grow issue, I think the Spud issue is important, and it should be considered. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments regarding this item?
Robert Husky, thirty-six fifteen Chatham Court, Ward Three. Just looking at that picture up there made me wonder. Since one of the only times that I've ever gotten high is when I was high off the ground, is what's gonna happen to the tower? to the tower there? Is it going to stay, since it apparently is within the boundaries of this proposed project? I'm just curious. After all, to some people, that's a regional grow.
Thank you.
No, we're, we're actually kind of proud of the tower. Uh, it's a landmark that's been here in Norman for a long time. I think Mr. Salier is the one that brought it to Norman. And so, no, we'll, we'll leave the tower, but we don't have any plans for any use of it, uh, beyond maybe putting some Christmas decorations on it each year, but beyond that. No, the tower will just remain as a landmark and as a focal point for us.
Thank you.
Camilla Jolly Stewart, 621 East Stewart Street, and my only question about this application is, will, um, whoever would be the appropriate person, um, address why this is not an allowed use, and what that standard is that we are considering changing so that we know exactly what, you know, what kind of precedent it might set for future developments in, in the zoning we have? Because it seems important, we have zoning for reasons that, you know, we prohibit things in certain areas, and we want them to happen in other areas. So if someone could call, could clarify that, that would be really helpful. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sure, um, so what is allowed now in commercially zoned areas as a dispensary? Uh, the, the SPUD would add to, uh, that allowed use, a grow facility, which is not currently allowed in our commercially zoned areas? I'm sorry, processing. Sorry, sorry to confuse that. I know that was an issue. Sorry. Processing. I mean, it's, it's the applicant's, uh...
No, what's the rationale that it's not allowed?
Oh, I think, uh, when council went through that process, uh, there, there were concerns, and there have been concerns expressed in recent meetings particularly about the forms of processing, and whether they're appropriate in all commercial areas. And so, uh, we allowed it, I think, only as a, as a special use, um, and, and then, of course, through the SPUD and PUD process, it, it can be allowed if approved by council.
Any other comments from the public regarding this item? Anyone out in the foyer? No? Nope.
Again, Tom Drummond, 1503 Lindell Circle. One of the questions that was asked was about usage. One of the things that I know, uh, this facility's been here for a long time. It's been repurposed, and this will be another repurposing of this facility that will give it longevity and, and leave it in place. The stuff that was across the street from us back in the day when it was Larry Spencer's Chevrolet, and so, those buildings were in very poor shape, and were probably about due to come down. This building is in very good shape, and would lend itself to being repurposed and continue to be used without having to have a large construction event that would take all of this material to a landfill, that would take all of the resources that would be needed to repurpose this facility later on in another purpose. So, as it is right now, it's probably one of the most logical uses of it, with the dispensary in the front, to have the kitchen and so forth in the back. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Petron.
I'd like to hear from Catherine what she thinks about the language in the, um, SPUD as far as, um, what Lee was speaking to, encourage developments with a superior built environment brought about throughout, I mean, is this...
That isn't contained in the zoning ordinance, uh, as, as statement of purpose under, uh, for SPUDs. Um, they're described as a special zoning district that provides an alternate approach to the conventional land use controls, and, um, to a PUD, to maximize unique physical features of a particular site and produce unique creative progressive or quality land developments. Um, the way they've been typically, uh, used and approved by council is, is typically, uh, it's a document that describes more specifically the types of uses they plan, which is oftentimes a combination from several zoning districts, so that's how they've typically been, been used in Norman. Honestly, the question about the statement of purpose is, is, uh, maybe the first time I've heard that question asked. So they've typically been used to combine several types of zoning and to add special conditions to those.
So this is kind of a unique application?
I, I don't know that it's unique under the SPUD ordinance as far as what we have, have seen in the past. It is unique in that it is combining both the commercial use of, um, a dispensary with a, with a, uh, processing facility, which we've been seeing more of lately, uh, but that's, that's not been, um, allowed by right by the city so far.
Are we allowed to ask if there's anybody from planning here? I just have some concerns about that. I know Mr. Beck was at the seniors' Planning Commission. Oh, they're meeting right now.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hall?
Um, I just wanted to make, uh, another more generalized comment in regards to pre-development meeting, and the process that proceeds from pre-development through planning, um, to the presentation to council. So, the standard notification area is a 350-foot radius, is that correct? Okay. So, um, when we're evaluating as a council, um, what the response is from, uh, the notification area, in this case, it's a commercial area with, um, very few property owners that I'm guessing would have an opinion maybe one way or the other. Um, so, the neighborhood across the street is not within the notification area, so those neighbors probably wouldn't have received, um, well, they didn't receive any kind of notification about the pre-development process yet. They still were concerned enough to, um, weigh in on the process, and there were, uh, a significant number of letters that were included in our packet from the neighborhood. I appreciate that the applicant did respond to some of the, um, the most common complaints about the grow process, but there also were many other complaints included in those letters that I read, that did speak to other factors in, um, having, uh, this type of, um, enterprise at the gateway and across from their neighborhood. So I just felt like that is important to point out, that because of the limitations of our notification process, there may not have been a technical high number of protests, but the surrounding neighborhoods certainly weighed in with their concerns about this project.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there any other comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes by a vote of seven to two. Voting against, Councilmember Hall, Councilmember Petron.
Item forty-six, resolution... I'm just getting ahead of myself. Um, I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
So moved.
Second?
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
To adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes by a vote of seven to two. Voting against, Councilmember Hall, Councilmember Petron.
All right. I was getting a little ahead of myself there for tonight's main event. Uh, Resolution 1920-39, approving and authorizing the Norman Regional Issuance of Bonds, Notes, or Other Evidences of Indebtedness on a Tax Exempt of taxable Basis at a Premium or Discount in the Aggregate Principal Amount of Not to Exceed $120 million to Provide Funds Necessary to Finance a Portion of the Cost of Certain Proposed Projects Including Capital Equipment, Capital Improvements, Land, Facility Construction, Acquisition, and/or Related Development or Project Management Fees to Support Projects Including, but Not Limited to, an Expanded Norman Regional Health Plex Facility and Construction Improvement, and/or Acquisition of Additional Facilities Elsewhere as Needed, Collectively the Project, and Pay the Costs of Issuance, Approving and Authorizing the Execution and Delivery of Documents in Connection Therewith, and Waiving Competitive Bidding Pursuant to 60OS Section 176F. This item was postponed, postponed from council's meeting of October 8th. Since that time, representatives from the Norman Regional Health System have attended many ward meetings, I think all of them, and conducted public forums to educate the community and answer questions regarding their Inspire Health program. There is a motion on the floor by Councilmember Scott, and seconded by Councilmember Wilson, to adopt the resolution. I'd like to recognize Richie Split from Norman Regional Health System to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. Councilmembers, city staff, thank you for this opportunity to return, to visit with you again, and, and resolve and finalize our conversation from the 24th. Uh, we've been very busy, so I stand before you on behalf of the 3,000-plus healers of Norman Regional Health System, many of whom are in the audience tonight, uh, with me and supporting this plan, so I want to thank our trustees, our employees, our physicians, our, our foundation board as well, and, and thank you for all of your support, and thank you for your, your time tonight. So, I have, indeed, we've been to all the ward meetings and many, many other meetings, and, and at your request, been sharing the Inspire Health Plan, so I want to thank you for your request for us to do that. It's been fruitful, and I want to review our slides quickly, some of the plan, and then talk about what's, what we've achieved since the 24th of September. So this is our plan, we call it Inspire Health. It is bold and transformational. It will transform our organization, but more importantly, it transforms the health and the wellness of our communities that we serve, and we're very excited about this plan. This is specifically the plan, you've seen these elements before. It includes the Health Plex expansion, an ambulatory cancer center pavilion addition on the Health Plex campus, an east side freestanding emergency department, a behavioral health center, 50-bed freestanding behavioral health center, and a Porter revitalization project as well. This is the why. Inspire Health improves access to care by expanding the locations in which we provide that care, the care sites around our Porter campus and all across our communities, and creating medical homes actually on the Porter site and beyond. It's concentrating our services, it's allowing our physicians to come under one roof, all of our providers, to care for our patients and do it in a singular focus. It's modernizing the way we deliver care, and it's about sustaining our future for the next 73-plus years. This was the ask on September 24th, after our board meeting on September 23rd, and our trustees unanimously supporting the bond issuance resolution, coming forward for your support and your vote for these, this bond issuance as well. Uh, just to remind you and the audience that these are tax-exempt revenue bonds, there is no liability to taxpayers, and there is no liability to the city of Norman. Since we last met on September 24th, it's been 49 days, and, again, we've been hard at work, and during that time, uh, leading up to September, September 24th, we shared that we had more than 60 sessions whereby we met with community members and, and shared the Inspire Health Plan. Since September 24th, we've had 80 such sessions, and including all of those ward meetings, including business owners around the Porter campus, uh, various civic groups, and it's been, again, very fruitful for us. We enjoyed our time listening and learning, and addressing any concerns that those groups and those individuals have. This is a little bit new since, uh, we met last. There is the city transportation investment that was approved, it was item 31 tonight, I believe, and our, our reinvestment again, uh, for that $50,000 for the paratransit service in our community, and we're happy to do this. I believe it's our eighth year to, to make that investment. Since that time, our bond rating agencies have reviewed Inspire Health, reviewed our organization, reviewed our plan, and in confidence, they retained, we retained our rating with S&amp;P, an A-minus rating, and then Moody's was, uh, a rating of BAA1, both with a stable outlook. That demonstrates their confidence not only in our organization, but in the plan. Also, uh, I, I want to mention tonight that, as a part of your approval of those bonds, that we will offer a friends and family bond issuance that would allow local investors to participate in Inspire Health, and this is some of the information around how that would happen. So we'll have a preliminary off, official statement on November 13th, pricing on November 19th, and between that time, those interested would need to set up an account through JP Morgan, Chase, a company called LLP that's not on the, the slide here, and/or Schwab, and that must be done before the 19th. And we'll close on those bonds mid-December. So that gives us an opportunity to invest in Inspire Health if you so choose. So you know those recommendations, and I want to touch on the new developments around the freestanding emergency department in East Norman, and, uh, we shared this news when we received, uh, the ability to move forward. So this is the site at Highway 9 and 24th Avenue, and you can see an image of our freestanding emergency department in Moore, Oklahoma today. We would, uh, want to replicate that construction on that site. This is about 30 acres. It allows us more than enough space to not only address the needs today, but plan for future growth as well. Also, on, as part of these sessions that we've been holding, uh, we were able to contact or be, or come into contact with the Neighborhood Association President for Pebblebrook, and we are going to set up a time in which we can visit with them and, uh, other neighbors in that area, and address any concerns they might have as well. Porter revitalization, this is, uh, a lot of new information. Some of you have seen some of the sketches, and so, since the 24th, uh, we have had a, a, uh, board meeting, and the board has authorized me to engage in negotiations with the city staff around the purchase of the Porter parcels that are on the 29 acres of the Porter campus today. And pending the approval of those bond issuance, this bond issuance, then we can move forward with those discussions and actually find an opportunity where the city would, would find some revenue that they could place into their general fund and spend as needed. So here's the 29 acres where the Porter campus is today, and, uh, it's somewhere between seven, 10, 12 acres, we're not sure, we're verifying the amount of the acreage, and would then engage in a fair market value price for, uh, those parcels. We've talked a lot about the Health Village, the Porter Health Village, and again, uh, we've partnered with ADG, a local architecture firm, and, uh, one that the city is familiar with, and worked on a number of Norman forward projects. Uh, they also included in this partnership, Skyline Inc. So you're familiar with that image in the middle, this is the Health Village concept that we shared last time, just as an image of what could be, uh, in the concept of a Health Village. And what we've done is worked with ADG, and this is a sketch of what an example of those 29 acres on the Porter campus would look like, and structures are placed there on this campus. Top center in that aqua blue color is the Urgent Care for Norman Regional Health System. There's a behavioral health, there's a, potentially, a senior wellness center that could find its way there, but this is the sketch that you all have seen, and what we've done since then with ADG and Skyline is add some depth. And so, what you see in the Porter Health Village concept here is just, uh, for, for your sake of, of, of finding your way to the north is upper screen left, that's the Brahms that sits on the corner, and then you can see these big boxes on those 29 acres as it would look in this concept. You can see that these red lines going across, what, what ADG has recommended and, and we support fully, is connecting that parcel of land to the neighborhoods surrounding it. So these streets go all the way through, allowing for that easier access and connectivity. That's from the east and west, also from the north and south. It's just another view of that same campus. I would point out, here, the arrow at the bottom middle is the main entrance, and this is what that main entrance would look like from just above street level. So you can see those monument signs there that, that sort of show a place, this is where you would enter, uh, primarily enter through that, into that Health Village. You can see Norman Regional, the Urgent Care Center, and an, an education or event center would be right there. This is a broader view of that image. And again, you can see the urgent care structure that is here, and then the event and education center connected to it. In the foreground could be the variety care structure that we talked about before, that's, by the way, this is all designed around scale and scope, so when we talked about variety care's interest in a 30,000-square-foot building, that is approximately 30,000 square feet. In the background, you can see a wellness center. In the background, you can see a wellness center. Now, just to give you some bearing, that's the Palace on the Prairie on the screen right. This is the Wellness Center. This is the Behavioral Health Center. And this this would be the Urgent Care Center here. You can see a park in the center, and this is a view looking back to the north. Top of the screen is Behavioral Health Center across the park. This is Behavioral Health, Wellness Center, Urgent Care Center, and these are in this rendering, the concept includes apartments that may or may not be a part of the final And this would simply be at the park, street level, if you will. And again, these are the concepts that were developed by A D G. based on our ideas, and our idea includes sitting down with you and those in the community, other partners who would be interested in developing this concept, really making that happen. We've already set an initial meeting to begin that conversation with Councilmember Hall and others who would like to join us to begin the planning, the thought process, to start master planning those twenty-nine acres, and then really bring in the the ideas, the finer points about which building, what service, and how we can make this Health Village a reality. Our commitment is deep and our commitment is strong to the Inspire Health Plan. That includes this Porter Health Village concept, and so on behalf of the Norman Regional Health System healers, our physicians, our trustees, all of our employees, we are asking for your support tonight. We're asking for your support of those one hundred and twenty million dollars in bonds so that we can make Inspire Health a reality, so that we can continue to improve the health of those we serve, and that we can do that more effectively, more efficiently, and do it all across our community. So with that, I would entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Holman.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Split. Could you please describe what the urgent care facility on the Porter Campus would do? What services would be provided there? How that's different than an emergency center? And would that facility service people who do not have health insurance? You know that a lot of people will show up at an emergency room, knowing that they will for sure be treated for whatever's going on, even if they have no money. Would this facility be able to address that as well?
Sure. So this, the urgent care facility is designed for, it's a lower intensity of care, and it's designed to, in our in our mind, the hope that we can connect our patients, our residents, to a physician and create a medical home. So that would be the purpose. So you also have minor bumps and bruises and things that you want to have taken care of, and urgent care can do that at a lower cost rather than, you know, walking into an emergency department and whether you have insurance or no insurance, and you know how expensive that can get. So our goal is to create a medical home where primary care lives, where specialty care is provided as well. We can use that education center. In fact, tonight, we're having a having a diabetes event back on the Porter Campus, continuing those sorts of things, elevating our our information, our awareness around health and wellness. As it speaks to one's ability to pay, we we take care of those who are in need, whether they have their insurance or not. That certainly happens in the emergency department. I would tell you, in this case, with Variety Care being that close, that's designed specifically for those services, for those who are underinsured or uninsured, to get also a medical home. So creating that synergy between those services and right there on that campus, I think, is very powerful.
At nighttime, someone that lives close to here, if they had an issue, they could go over there and get some sort of basic treatment.
You bet.
And if needed, they could be transported to the emergency center, but this could, this facility could still address most common issues that someone that lives around this neighborhood, and they could still go to this facility.
That's true, yes. And I would also add that it's, you know, we would, our goal is, would be able to to offer that during extended hours. So we know it's important that you can have access to that care before you go to work and certainly after you get off work, so that urgent care model would include extended hours.
Okay. Well, I had a few things, but kind of lost them for a second, so let somebody else go. I might come back. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Wilson.
So on the your graphic where you had the streets going through to the neighborhoods, I think that's a good idea, and who pays for that? Does City of Norman pay for that, or is the new owner or or you guys pay for it? How's that work?
Yeah, that's that that would be something that we definitely want to have that conversation.
So right now, as it stands, we would pay for it probably.
Well, I would just talk, speak from our experience for for the facility that we built in Moore, and so we had a a public-private partnership that occurred there. We paid for some of the streets, and we also had some assistance from the city, so I think there's a, there are certainly creative ways where we could make that happen and and really bring this to reality.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Carter.
I have more of a statement versus a question, but when this process began, I was a little bit of a skeptic, and I really want to compliment you, Mr. Split, on your courage in tackling this issue. I think it was a, the scope of the project is an intimidating scope, and I think, you know, there weren't a lot of people with that kind of courage to tackle that, and then the political side of it was another football, so to speak, and, you know, as we were literally overwhelmed with emails, people stopping me at the grocery store, people stopping me at the lunch place for a restaurant, or people calling me, you know, with questions beyond our ability or my ability to respond to them. And as we went through this process, when I received questions from the public, I forwarded them to you, and you were, and your team were very responsive, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
And, you know, Councilmember Holman made a great point at our ward meeting. It was, you know, would we have, and it's about local control and the value of local control and how, I think, fortunate we are to have you and our trustees and your team in Norman administrating our hospital, because I don't, Councilmember Holman said, I don't think we would have had the C E O. of Integris or Mercy or some corporation in Denver if they owned our hospital at the rec center on Sunday afternoon at four o'clock on Reeves Park, answering questions, every question that came up, and I just want to thank you for that and for your courage.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Beerman.
Oh, I forgot I had pushed my button. So I heard a couple times in the last, was it six weeks, about a letter of intent from Variety Care.
Yes.
Does that exist?
Yes.
Because I have not seen it.
Yes.
Okay, great. We've got it. That was step one. My second question is, are you, you're committing to fair market value for the land that we own on the Porter Campus.
Yeah, and we need resolution of the number of acres.
Does that include whatever improvements are on the land?
Well, we have an appraisal that would include, that has included or assessed those improvements to this point, so that's, that's why we pay the appraisers to give us those numbers.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Holman.
At our ward meeting, we saw some numbers, some dollar amounts that were under the Porter Campus that we didn't see at the council meeting back in September, so would you mind elaborating on that type of commitment?
Sure, I, the, I'll have to refresh my memory. Let me think on the Healthplex.
Twenty for behavioral health and ten for Porter.
Yes, so behavioral health was the twenty million dollars. The Porter revitalization placeholder was ten million dollars. The Healthplex and the ambulatory and the cancer center, I believe that totaled to about two eighty-five, if I'm not mistaken.
So Norman Regional Health System is committing ten million dollars to the revitalization of Porter Campus.
We have that as our placeholder so that we can, we can make this happen.
And that's in addition to twenty million for?
Behavioral health.
Behavioral health.
Yes, sir.
Those, those are two things that we didn't know at the first meeting, and and I was very appreciative that you were able to provide that information at our ward meeting. I think that gives many of us more confidence that this isn't just going to be left alone and abandoned, so that, you've answered my questions about the east side ambulance center or the emergency center and how it could be, it's being designed in a way that it could be expanded, and if the demand merits it so in five or ten years, that could become a second hospital in Norman, from what I understand.
Yes.
And, okay. Would you mind going over a few of the reasons why the, why the current setup is not fiscally sustainable? As much as we love the historic site of our hospital, my father was born there. Why does this change need to happen? Why, from a fiscal standpoint, does the health system need to make this change?
So for us, it is about trying to see around the corner and and look into the future. It's very difficult to predict that future, but we have a history of what's happened across our country and what's happening in our community. We have an aging, a wonderful facility, an aging facility on the Porter Campus, and we have the Healthplex that's newer in our tenth year this year since opening. We have inability and inability to expand on the Healthplex Campus today, and we would have to invest significant dollars in the Porter Campus today to, you know, continue to to maintain its upkeep, and and in the end, all of that upkeep, like we have been doing, taking great care of that building, we still can't overcome the low ceilings, the narrow corridors, and the difficult maze to find our way around, and so we could refurbish that facility and and be left with some of those challenges, or we could build fresh and new and create a modern, easy-to-access, patient-flow perspective that is second to none, and a unique opportunity for do, for us to do that. Today, one of our physicians during the last meeting, he talked about having two great campuses that are three-quarters strength, patients chasing doctors, doctors chasing patients, and if we can bring this all under one roof, we can extend the services we provide, we can focus on those centers of excellence all under one roof, bring all of that talent together and do it better than we've ever done before, and be fully strengthened under that single campus roof. So those are some of the elements. It's about anticipating the shift away from the four walls of a traditional hospital into that outpatient setting, so we have to be able to address the patient demand and requirements to deliver care differently today. This is about modernizing. This is a generational impact idea, similar to when we opened the doors in nineteen forty-six. This truly is a transformational opportunity for our community, so it's about becoming more effective, more efficient, and focusing on the patient experience and the way we deliver care to each and every one of those patients.
Would you say that even if we were to reject this plan, that maybe it doesn't happen in two or three years as you would like to do, but that this type of transition would really need to happen regardless at some point in the future?
There are continued pressures on, financial pressures on every healthcare provider in the country, and to be operating two systems in the way we are, or two hospitals the way we are, less than five miles apart, that continued pressure would result in exactly what you're describing, and so we don't want you to deny this this request. We want you to support it so we can be proactive. This truly is being proactive about these changes and these demands on the way healthcare is delivered and and the way we operate. So the answer is yes, this is Plan A, B, all the way to Z. This is the right thing to do for our organization and for our community, and so we're fully committed to this plan, and we want your support so we can make it happen faster.
So with confidence, could probably, I could probably assume that a rejection of this tonight does not keep everything exactly the way it is forever?
I would say that's accurate.
Yeah, okay.
That our resolve is deep, and it is because this is the right, right plan.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. That's all the questions I have right now.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman, for bringing up some of the additions, additional information that we've received in the forty-nine days.
Right.
I also want to thank you, Mr. Split, for persevering with us, especially focusing on the concerns that are deep in Ward Four, because the Porter Campus is then the heart of Ward Four, and your willingness and your staff's willingness to address those concerns, be available to respond to multiple questions, and to also, I believe, react and offer some more certainty than we certainly had on the evening of September the twenty-fourth. So I am glad that you were able to get on the record the investments that you were willing to make in the Porter Campus, and I don't want that to go unnoticed, that you are committing to twenty million dollars for the behavioral health unit, or hospital, excuse me, and ten million dollars for site development. That, that is a significant investment that we were looking for, so I appreciate that. I also want you to have an opportunity, because these are questions that you've actually already answered in various meetings that you and I have both been attending, either Ward Four meetings or meetings with various business owners along the Porter corridor, and I think just visiting with residents that are in the neighborhood too, if you could speak a little bit to the transition as you see it right now of how the pieces will be put in place and how the revitalization effort will proceed simultaneously on the Porter Campus. I think the great fear is that it's going to be deferred, it's going to be put off, that there's going to be a chain-link fence put up around the Porter Campus, and I want to give you an opportunity to address those concerns.
Thank you for that opportunity. It is, I've shared a timeline in some of the, in the ward meetings in particular, all the meetings we've attended, we've distributed these, these packets that included timelines, so pending, you know, bond issuance approval. Once we have those bonds approved, we can engage with the architect, we can engage with a construction manager, and we can begin planning these, all these elements, all these core recommendations, and so likely, the first building to be completed is the freestanding emergency department in in the, on the east side of Norman at Highway nine and Twenty-Fourth Avenue, because that'll be a shorter design time and a faster construction process, so that would likely be the first element to open. The Healthplex expansion and the ambulatory cancer center, that's going to take longer to design and also to construct, and so that's somewhere in twenty twenty-three. We're estimating December twenty twenty-three, but would love to see that pushed forward to sooner. During that entire time, we will be able to plan, master plan, and begin working with developers and the other partners to come in and and actualize this Porter Health Village, and so we have ample time to begin that planning process. There are, if we settled on a master plan and we knew exactly what we wanted to put on that campus and where we were going to put it, there are parts of the campus today that could actually begin construction. Let's say, for example, there was a wellness center that wanted to locate to that campus, and it was in a certain spot that is unoccupied today, we may have the opportunity to begin construction on that wellness center. So the sooner we have those bonds approved, when we have bonds approved, is the sooner we begin design and we begin those conversations in our community specific to the Porter Health Village design and and development.
My next question is also a result of one of the slides that you added along the way in response to concerns from not only residents but also business owners and physicians in the area, and that has to do with the privately-owned buildings that are not part of the Porter Campus but that are directly related to healthcare, access to healthcare and providing healthcare in core Norman. I was really interested to learn about the relationship between the health system and some of the physician practices, and I also want to give you an opportunity to reach a wider audience of that relationship and why you're confident that they will remain in their current home.
We have numerous, Norman Regional has numerous assets, if you will, clinics, care sites that are surrounding the Porter Campus, and those are important to us because they're important to the community, and we have no intention of of leaving that part of our community. They, they have long traditions of care in those areas, and we want to, want them to remain there because it's an important part of our community with a high need, and so they will remain. There are two groups that would relocate to the Healthplex, that's oncology, and our general surgeons, they'll follow. They'll follow where surgery's done and where cancer care is delivered. Outside of that, our care sites will stay, and then we will add providers to this area in that urgent care that I mentioned before. There are opportunities for us to continue to add services and connect physicians and patients right there on that campus. Those independent physicians who are in the area, we, those are some of the business owners that we've been talking with around Inspire Health. And part of their concern is, again, that we would be vacating the space, and that would have a negative impact to their, their structures and their developments. And I would submit to you, to all of council, and as I did to them, this is actually an opportunity to elevate that area, to have a spark of renewal. It's a rebirth. It is a place where people will want to be. And so, those property values and their need, a need for their services in that area should continue to be strong and increase with time. So, I'm confident this sort of renewal will have a very positive effect on those owners of businesses and those who live in and around the Porter campus.
So, that is a perfect segue to another slide that was added along the way that discussed the possibility and the eligibility of the Porter campus for new market tax credits.
Right.
Could you speak to that, please?
Sure. There are incentives that could be offered to developers in this area. New market tax credit is certainly one of those tools that can be used. And it offers developers the opportunity for tax incentives to, to invest specifically in these zones that have been designated. And, and the Porter campus is a part of that new market tax credit. The freestanding emergency department actually falls in an opportunity zone. In a similar way, it is a tax benefit to those who develop there and have an investment. So, we believe that gives a great opportunity to those who then, who again, want to find an opportunity where development can occur, where they can invest their dollars, receive a benefit to them personally, but that benefit translates into the benefit overall for our community with this rebirth and renewal.
I also want to circle back to just the transition plan. I want to thank members of your staff and your emergency departments in particular for being gracious with their time and allowing me to visit all three of the emergency departments to get a better understanding of how they actually function. One of the things that was pointed out to me in the transition process is that there will be a very careful evaluation of how and when to close the emergency department on Porter, and that the freestanding emergency department will most likely be up and running and functional for a period of time
That's correct.
to assess how it is actually all working before you address what's going to happen to the emergency department on the Porter campus.
Right.
Is there anything else you want to add to that?
I would say that's 100% accurate.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's that, the whole thing, there, to the point of the Porter campus today, we would not close the campus until we had the ability to transfer all services and patients after the HealthPlex is completed. We can't begin shutting down the Porter campus today. We need those, the new bricks and mortar to be added and finished before we can begin that transitional process. And that will take months of planning before that happens.
Okay. Thank you. I think that those are the questions I have for now. I do have some comments that I intend to make later.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Patron.
Hello?
Hello? Oh, all right. Well, I want to echo Councilmember Carter's comments about how hard you've worked and your staff, and I really appreciate all of the questions that they've been more than willing to field. And Mr. Manfredo was a wealth of information at the Ward Three meeting, and I really appreciate him coming out and just answering a lot of concerns, and I think learning a lot of new facts. And this plan has progressed immensely since the 24th. And it's, I just appreciate that. I do have a few questions. I think they're pretty painless.
Good. Yes, I did vote. Next question.
I appreciate that. Okay. So, we've talked about a wellness center several times. Would you be willing to meet with our senior ad hoc group for the senior center and collaborate with them on what they're hoping? We have a community seniors group that, you know, I think it would just be helpful if they could have a seat at the table with you to help collaborate with that.
I would jump at the opportunity.
I appreciate that. We met with them before, for a council conference right before this meeting. And, I mean, I learned a lot in that as well, but I think put the two organizations together and maybe see if we can really have some collaboration there.
Be happy to.
The acreage site of the city's property on Porter. So, I saw on your slide that it was at seven acres, but then there's been some guesstimate that it could be as much as 12. Is that correct?
That's what I've heard recently, yes.
Okay. Is, are they running title or something, or is that contingent on bond approval? Have we moved forward in any of that to find out? I know it's been since 1930 or something that we're having to go back and check title?
So, I don't have a up-to-date status, but the answer to that is, I see the city manager shaking his head. That's my understanding, and it's beyond my, it's, so we have multiple folks looking at that and resolving it.
Great. Thanks. All right. And so, I think the question that everybody wants to hear from you, in your professional opinion and that of your staff here, maybe they can raise their hand if they, if the answer is yes. Do you believe that the consolidation into the HealthPlex will improve health outcomes to your patients and residents of Norman?
I don't even need to look around, but, yes, unequivocally.
Thank you. And I, I would like to share comments later as well, but this is question time, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions from councilmembers? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments.
That is a tough man to follow. I love this plan. I'm inspired by it. I think, I think it's going to give the community what we need, and it's going to facilitate bringing in Slaughtersville, Little Axe, all these other communities that we want to reach out to. Also, Richard, your posture is just so perfect. You inspire me. I'm dealing with lordosis and kyphosis, and it will not go away. But, okay, I feel better. If you have any suggestions for how to deal with that, please. I especially love the, the way of bringing in other members in the community. I, that's, that's exactly what we need to do. And, so, thank you for quarterbacking this. Madam Mayor, I want to echo what you said at the study session that I didn't attend, but watched on YouTube.
Okay. Okay.
Something we all should be doing. You've been using the word fruitful, and you're right. There are people in our community who would like to see some fruit trees. Urban agriculture is the future. And I don't say that just kiddingly. It is funny. We're not trying to, you know, meet all of our food needs with community gardens and fruit trees, but it does have an impact on our consciousness and how we think about each other and our future. And I love you. I love you. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? All right. Seeing none, this is an opportunity for council to make final comments regarding this item. Councilmember Scott.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out tonight and bearing with us, bearing with us last time. Whenever we ultimately ended up postponing the vote to today, I want to thank you guys so much for coming to the Ward meeting that we had in Ward Eight at the end of September, at such short notice, answering the questions, sticking around after I had to go. So, thank you so much for spending that time. And to all of those who have made the phone calls, sent the emails, taken their time to reach out to us and express their support or not. But I've received overwhelmingly emails and phone calls in support of this plan, and I supported it last time, and I'll support it again tonight. I absolutely support greater access to quality healthcare for all people, and I'm very excited about the expansion and consolidation. And I appreciate you all and your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Wilson.
I'm sorry. I thought we were going down the line. I supported this project when I first heard about it, because of the East Side ambulance, emergency, whatever it's called. I thought that would be good for our ward. We've, we've struggled out there in the rural area to have emergency services, so I appreciated that. I supported the postponement after all of the questions from the community came at us, which I thought were all appropriate. I really am glad we did that postponement, because I feel like we've all learned a little more. And, and there was the biggest Ward meeting I've ever had, even over Stormwater, was the one you guys come to, came to at the Franklin Baptist Church. I made a new friend in Mary, even though I was really mean to her at 1:00 in the morning, when she wanted to talk more about this, and, and I didn't really want to. So, sorry, Mary. But we're friends now. And, so, I really appreciate that effort, because that's huge in my ward. We don't get a lot of city slickers out there, you know? So, I really appreciate that. I know there's a lot of people that are skeptical, a lot of people that are fearful. A lot of change is scary, and that's, the hospital's been there for, on Porter since 1946. So, I realize that, I don't remember it being built, so it's been there a while. And so, the thing that kind of keeps coming back to me is that this group has been operating a hospital in our community since 1940s. They've yet to do anything that I've heard of that was sketchy. So, I have people from my ward, Dr. Lob, who's talked to me directly about the problems at the hospital, Mary, and some other people that showed up that are part of my ward, people I know in the community that work at this facility, are telling me the problems that they're experiencing daily trying to do their jobs. So, with that, I trust this group. And I've got these papers. I'm holding on to them, and I want to be, where is this Health Village in a couple of years? So, you know, I'm going to be retired one of these days, so you think I'm going to not haunt you on this one? So, thank you for everything you all have done. Thanks for everybody coming out here.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hall.
So, since the Porter campus is in the heart of Ward Four, as you can imagine, there's been an outpouring of not only support, but also opposition. So, one of my goals in voting to postpone for the Inspire Health vote was to use that time for community engagement, listen to constituents who support the plan, those who oppose the plan, and all of the questions and concerns in between. It was important to continue to educate myself about the details of the Inspire Health Plan and to work with Mr. Split and others in his, on his staff to provide additional answers to what the future actually is going to hold for the Porter campus. While it's important for all of us to consider the impact of this proposal on our community as a whole, my focus from the beginning has been on the Porter campus issues, because it's in the middle of Ward Four. So, I do have a few comments that I want to make, and I want to make sure that they're on the record. And I also am reaching out to my Ward Four constituents that I see here in the audience with us tonight. And I know there are many of you that are comfy in your pajamas at home, that are watching on TV. And I really want it to be part of the record, so that people can go back and understand how I have arrived to where I am tonight. So, since September 24th, I've had two Ward Four meetings, one in the evening, one on a Sunday, to offer the opportunity for Ward Four residents to attend a presentation at times that would be better possibly for their schedule. I've met with Mr. Split and on my own with small business owners, property owners, developers in the vicinity of the Porter campus, as well as Ward Four residents, including many who work at the Porter Hospital, to get their insights on what it's actually like to work on the Porter campus, as well as hearing from those for both for and against the Inspire Health Plan by phone and email. I've toured the Porter campus to understand the physical infrastructure challenges and visited all three emergency departments to better understand how they currently operate and how they might operate in the future. The city council held a study session on October 29th to gain a better understanding of the financial impact of the Inspire Health Plan if we remain, if we would choose to remain in the status quo or to move forward with the Inspire Health Plan. The most common thread from my ward in all of this was the general feeling of uncertainty as to the future of the Porter campus. The conclusion I've arrived at is that maintaining the status quo actually leads to greater uncertainty than moving forward with the Inspire Health Plan. At the October 29th study session, we learned about the scenarios that were tested, maintaining the status quo compared to consolidating services and building a freestanding emergency department. The projections for maintaining the status quo saw no benefit over time and actually resulted in a potential $50 million loss. It's riskier for the financial health of the health system to maintain the status quo than it is to move forward. My goal was to press for as much certainty as I possibly could for the Porter campus. So, my summary of what is, I want to present my summary of what's been occurred or been clarified to a greater level of detail since September 24th, and some of those things we've already mentioned. So, there is a letter of intent from Variety Care to build a 30,000-square-foot facility and expand its current level of service on the Porter campus. The Norman Regional Health System financial commitments we've mentioned to the Porter campus include $20 million for a 50-bed hospital, Behavioral Health Hospital, and $10 million for site development. There's also a commitment from the Norman Regional Health System to build an urgent care, primary care, specialty care facility that will be one of the anchors for the Porter campus, as well as the Behavioral Health Hospital. And the other anchor would also be Variety Care. Mr. Split mentioned hiring ADG to provide more possibilities in a visual form for our, members of our community to see what a reimagined Porter campus might look like under the Health Village concept. It's also my understanding that although they can't speak to it publicly, they're actively exploring other partnerships in their pursuit to make the Porter campus the best that it can be. We've been made aware of the new market tax credits that are available for making equity investments on the Porter campus. We've been assured that the Emsat Station will remain in its current location on Porter. And in that regard, another interesting development is that the city council Business and Community Affairs Committee is actually exploring the options right now for offering ambulance insurance to Norman residents, similar to a model that Oklahoma City has with Emsa. They've also shared care sites and providers surrounding the Porter campus that remain committed to serving their large patient population. Mr. Split went into more detail about that, so I don't need to do that. But what I've discovered is, while at one time it may have been more important to be in close proximity to a hospital, the changing trends in healthcare from inpatient to outpatient, and current model of hiring hospitalists for inpatient care suggests that there's no real incentive for those practitioners to change location. The Norman Regional Health Authority approved the negotiation to purchase the city of Norman-owned property scattered across the Porter campus, allowing for the transformation of the campus to proceed at a more rapid pace. And I would like to emphasize at this point, because it has come up in several questions, that the commitment to purchase the property is not, it's not unclear. They're committed to doing that. It's really on the side of the city of Norman at this point to determine what is actually available and what our position might be on entering into negotiations about purchasing that property. But the commitment is firm from the health system to proceed, no matter if it's seven acres, eight acres, 11.2 acres, or 12 acres. So, I think we have that commitment. The other thing that really has not been mentioned is that the health system contracted, engaged in, to contract a strategic consultant to take a look at what might really work with the Behavioral Health Hospital, develop strategies to improve outcomes, and increase access for this underserved patient population in our community, and they're at work on that right now. There also, another thing that we asked for was a list of community contributions and key partners to demonstrate what the value of having a community hospital in the city of Norman and why that's meaningful. And so, I have an extensive list that shows a community contribution of $1,961,521. of $1,961,521 and $409,730 community encounters. I think that's impressive. The management staff is also open to further discussion to engage the Oklahoma Chapter of the Urban Land Institute to organize a technical assistance panel similar to the 2015 ULI study entitled "Reimagine the Griffin Memorial Hospital." Technical assistance panel differs in its scope in that it's made up of experts that have more of an affinity for our local market and are experts that we tap into across the state of Oklahoma that really know our communities and our state. So, finally, to demonstrate my commitment on behalf of Ward Four and the City Council, as well as the commitment of the health system and the health authority to the timeline presented at multiple ward meetings and numerous additional presentations offered since September 24th to the Porter campus revitalization process identified to begin in January in 2020, which include incorporating concepts included in the 2010 Porter Corridor Plan. Mr. Split announced and I'm confirming that our first meeting will take place on June 20, or January 23rd, 2020. Community engagement will be a crucial part of this planning process going forward. And the Porter campus will remain operational for several more years while our community and residents in Ward Four can participate starting in January 2020 to reimagine the master planning process for the Porter campus. So, for all of those reasons, I intend to vote to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Petron.
What am I supposed to say after that? Actually, I do have a couple of things. Even up until today, I keep having more new things that I'm learning since September 24th and this plan continues to evolve. And I really feel like that you are taking resident input to heart. I really feel like you are trying to incorporate what they're telling you. And healthcare is a dinner table conversation. I can barely see, I'm short. And so, I feel like it was just really important to me that everyone had that sense of, okay, this isn't going to be just about the money, that it really is about looking down the road and how our health outcomes are going to be different or better. And so, more than that, being an active player in the community. One, it might seem like it was an easy meeting for you, but one of the big ones for me was when you met with Progressive Independence. That is incredibly important to a lot of us here, and I really appreciate that. In fact, your 80 meetings, I feel like you've gone out into the community since 9/24 instead of having people come to the hospital because groups like Progressive Independence and just everyday busy lives, it's hard to get them to come to you sometimes. So, I really appreciate that you came to all of our ward meetings and that you're incorporating the comments that they have given you into your plan. And I really hope that you will continue to do that with Porter. Today, we had a member of Norman Regional Health System come to the homeless task force meeting this morning, and her input was amazing. And I really, really appreciate that she showed up. She wasn't asked to be there, she just cared enough to come. And made a commitment to us on the task force that Norman Regional will be an active participant in trying to help us service that community and especially, you know, we have an emergency right now. It's cold and we've got to get some warming shelters in place and just whatever that you all can do for the medical side of it, I appreciate. So anyway, that was new even as of today that I appreciate. And I know it's not about Inspire Health, but it's about being a community partner. The Blue Cross Advantage Plan. Since September 24th, now you're in network for Blue Cross Advantage. And that is huge for a lot of members of this community because it's open enrollment now. And when they go onto the marketplace, they're going to find their community hospital under the Advantage, and we appreciate that. Keeping a presence at Porter, a medical presence. And Variety Care is huge and that letter of intent is extremely important. And I was really happy to hear the additional services that they're going to, they're planning to be providing there and the full women's healthcare. That, to me, is extremely important. But also that you plan to also be there, that Norman Regional is going to maintain a presence there. And it's not just about the money for you all buying the land that's the city's. It's about you having skin in the game. So that when you leave, one of the big fears was blight. And the landowners around, business owners, property owners. So, if I, in my opinion, if you have skin in the game, you're much more concerned about your own property values. So, with the board just approving that, what, 10 days ago, 7 days ago, something like that, that brings a lot of peace to us up here because we have other things we have to look at besides just healthcare. So, we're not trying to be mean, it's just that we wear different hats than the board. So, to me, the last five weeks has been incredibly instrumental to bring peace up here and to see, I mean, it looks completely different now. We can look at something and say, yeah, okay, this is coming along. They hired ADG and they've got a vision that we can all look forward to coming to fruition. So, I appreciate that and I just really beg you to get ahold of the seniors group, the ad hoc group, and please meet with them and collaborate. And continue to be in touch with Ward Four, with Lee over here, and make Porter something that, you know, continue to incorporate the community's input, if you will. Thank you so much, and I plan to support it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Bierman.
So, I, back on September 24th when this came up, no sooner had we started to talk about this, my phone started buzzing. I was getting text messages, tagged in comments, just people freaking out. They didn't know what was going on, they didn't feel like they had specifics, and they were concerned about their healthcare. And in my two ward meetings that Richie attended, one of the things that was brought up was a question about, you know, is it sentimentality about the Porter campus, what is it? And I responded that I don't think that it's sentimentality. I think that as several councilmembers spoke to, healthcare is an anxiety-provoking topic for many, many people. And when they see a big, significant change to their healthcare, it makes them nervous and they want to know that their concerns are heard, they want to know that their elected representatives are paying attention and that we are asking the right questions. And so, I am thrilled about the freestanding emergency department on Highway 9 and 24th. I love the possible expansion opportunities. I love the commitment to making sure that we have lower-cost healthcare options there like urgent care or access to it if they present there. I do remain concerned about Porter. And so, I'm going to go one step further than Councilmember Petron, and I'm going to respectfully demand that you keep us at the table for the master planning process and that you start it soon. I do not want to wait until that campus is vacant for us to start the planning process. I want the first shovel in the ground on the health village to happen the day after the doors are locked by the last attending physician to leave that building the night before. So, with that being said, I, I do remain concerned, but I'm cautiously optimistic. And I will drag you back to the table if we have to to make sure that the Porter campus turns into something wonderful. And I do get the sense that you are committed to that as well. I love seeing specific, something tangible that I can wrap my hands around and say, this or something like it. And not, well, a second and say that we have breaking news on the city's public transit vote. It looks like we are passing with a 70% approval. So, are we going to sing? Are we going to sing? Mayor Clark, we're going to sing.
I'd really prefer we finish this issue, and I'm pretty sure everyone in the audience would too. I appreciate your enthusiasm and I can't stop you, but my vote would be to continue. We're so close.
Wheels on the bus go round and round, all through the town. Anyway, thank you all. Now, at least, we have the ability to potentially get a bus stop at the Health Plex now and at our new freestanding emergency department. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Scanlon.
You may or may not know, but we've been texting each other for the last hour and a half on these results. And I guess the question was, who was going to be at the microphone when it looked like the winner came along and Ward One won?
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
I'll be brief, believe it or not. I thought this was a good plan in September. I had some concern, and I voiced them at the time. I believe in this forum, but certainly to the hospital authorities. And it had to do with ambulance service and it had to do with the repurposing of the Porter campus. Like others on the council, I've visited the facility, I've talked to the people, I've gotten an education. Since that September meeting, details been added, some points have been clarified. And we saw a pretty decent financial analysis, which was important to me. What I thought was a good plan in September, I think is a great plan tonight. I really, really am in favor of this thing and can really hardly wait to shut up and vote. I will have to second one thing that Councilmember Hall mentioned, and that was the contributions of the hospital and the hospital auxiliary to this city. $2 million, and that may be an understatement. I know for a fact, for example, that in that figure is some 70,000 Meals on Wheels, but I know from the lady that runs that, that it's more like 80,000. And I'm sure that there's other things like that. The contributions of this organization, they're good citizens and the contributions to the city can't even be measured by that $2 million plus. It's just incredible. I thank you for your hard work. I thank you for your patience with us as we dug through this thing, and I'm ready to vote.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. Be pretty brief, not much more than I can add, other than I've been sitting on this council for almost seven years, longer than anybody else up here. And I've made a lot of big votes in that time, some really big decisions that were really difficult. This ranks right up there at the top with them, even though it's not the city's money that's on the line here. It is a big decision, as we've all discussed. It has an impact throughout our entire city. And as Councilwoman Bierman mentioned, healthcare is something that causes great anxiety for many of our residents. And so, the main reason I wanted to postpone on the 24th is because I agree, I do like the plan. There was things about it I thought were really positive and could have a very positive impact on the city, but there were still some questions, and specifically about the Porter campus. It's not in Ward Seven, but being in the central part of the city like that and having been there for so long, what happens with that property is very important. And having some numbers to go with it, some detailed drawings of what could be there really goes a long way with me. And at the ward meeting that we had back in October, I really, I was amazed at how much more detail we were able to get in just that amount of time and assurances about what would happen. Two of the board members for Norman Regional Health System are former councilmembers. The Chair of the Board, Doug Cubberly, sat in this very seat for a decade. And Councilmember, former Councilmember Kevin Pipes represented Ward Four, where the hospital, Porter Hospital campus sits. And it goes a long way with me that those two people believe in this plan and believe that it's the right thing to do. I trust their judgment. I believe that they wouldn't suggest that we go forward with this if they didn't believe it was the right thing to do. So, for the future of healthcare services in the City of Norman, although this, you know, transition, expansion, and consolidation may be painful and tough, I think it is in the best interest of the entire community in the long term. And I do believe that what might happen here at the Porter campus will be truly transformative for this part of Norman in a very positive way. I think Ward Seven residents, especially around Highway Nine, are going to benefit greatly from having an emergency center that is closer to them. I know that many residents, lower-income residents that live in the eastern parts of Ward One are going to be a lot closer to an emergency center. I know that's going to be a big deal to a lot of those folks. So, it's a big deal. I appreciate all the work that's been done and I appreciate all of you coming to both of these meetings and sitting through and listening to us hash this out. I know the last meeting went till almost 2:00 AM, I think, and it was very frustrating to leave without a resolution there. But as I think we can all agree, the postponement, I think, has turned out to be the best thing. And I am excited to and with confidence, excited to support this plan tonight. So, thank you very much. I look forward to continuing this conversation and where we go from here. So, thank you very much and we'll see you next time.
Well, hopefully you'll stick around for the vote, Councilmember. Okay. It's a big night for Norman, public transit, public health. This is, again, a very big night for our communities. We continue to invest in our future. Thank you to all that voted today, but thank you to all that went to a ward meeting or one of their many meetings. This is what local government looks like. I have said it before and I will say it again. The most important level of government is local government. We may not get all the fancy headlines and all the commercials and all that fun stuff, but the work that we do every Tuesday, every day, we can all attest to, we do this. This is not a part-time job. We're accessible and the decisions we make affect people's everyday lives so much faster than decisions made in Oklahoma City or Washington DC. So, thank you for engaging. This is what makes Norman great. So, with that, the motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
All right, we will move on to miscellaneous discussion. This is an opportunity for citizens to address City Council as a whole. Remarks shall be directed to the council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less.
Richie Split, Ward Eight, resident. Thank you for what you've done tonight. And before Dr. Wayland leaves, I just want to recognize him because you may have seen on our Facebook page posted yesterday on Veterans Day, one of our patients, when Dr. Wayland found out that he was a World War II veteran and that he flew on planes, he got in his own plane and he did a flyover so that that veteran could see that plane. So, thank you.
Cindy Rogers, 633 Reed Avenue, Ward Four. And, yeah. Now that we got those things out of the way, let's talk about TIF. I know you're going to have an executive session meeting possibly after this. And I hope we can all be inspired by the Inspire Health process, all the details that came out, all the citizen engagement, all the public meetings, all the responses to citizens' concerns, all the learning and extra details that we got. And I'm hoping we can use that as we address the TIF, which has also been a very difficult situation. I've been thinking about this a lot since 2005. And I want to just emphasize that the proposal, whatever we do, the Bierman Plan, the Walker Plan, Petron-Bierman Plan, it's creating a new contractual obligation. And so, that puts different obligations on the city. And I have been against the negotiated plan because I think this is putting some unexpected obligations on the council. If the roads are over what we expect them to be, then the city would be expected to pick those up, the roadway improvement costs. If the competitive facilities for Norman Forward Swim and the multi-sport gym goes over costs, both with the Norman Forward, combined with the TIF funds, the city is contractually obligated to put in those costs. And we heard from Mr. Francis- And we heard from Mr. Francis Go just tonight that there aren't extra funds in Norman Forward to pick that up. Also, there are deadlines for completing things, the roads. If we don't meet those, are then we going to face future litigation because we didn't meet those and be pressured into more incentives? There are deadlines for building the Norman Forward projects. And there are no deadlines and there's absolutely no obligation for our TIF partners, it's supposed to be a private partnership, to spend any money or build anything more going forward. It's all city obligation in the negotiations you're looking at. And I find that reprehensible, and I also find that putting our budget at a huge risk because we know that litigation threats are going to be there. And it opens us up to lots of litigation threats that will put our budget at risk in the future and also put us right back in the situation to face pressure to accept deals that aren't good for the city as a whole because we might get sued. So, I'm going to urge you as strongly as I can as a citizen who's engaged and knowledgeable about this issue to please put as much effort and engagement into thinking about the TIF as we-
Evan Dunn, Ward seven. I have a newspaper here with me and I was going to kind of rip off of it. I've been watching stuff online about, you know, podcasts from Joe Rogan. And Edward Norton has a new film out that I think is, resonates with a lot of people in the culture right now. But I have been thinking about the TIF and I want to, you know, associate myself with a lot of Cynthia's comments and concerns. I remember the last time we discussed this, there were a number of lawyers who came up here and implored us to wait, that we need transparency, as if we hadn't been advertising these meetings and as if someone who really wanted to be a part of these discussions couldn't have. Over the past six months, a year, I kind of found that offensive. So, I appreciate your restraint in not expressing your condescension. I think those lawyers who are making those statements, I think that they ought to be asked to do pro bono work with Catherine. If we choose to call the bluff and we acknowledge that it's the city government who's breaking the contract, they, the developer, has not met a number of requirements and that we're willing to go into some type of mediation, arbitration, or something to hammer out a deal that is more mutually beneficial. If they were willing to do that and we had a larger, an expanded staff, then I think that that would be much more attractive. They don't come in here, though, and express their positions. They don't come in here and, I don't even know who they are. Is it just the OU Foundation? Do they not have a Board of Directors? Do they not have donors who have a stake in this? I think they do. There's something, there's somebody to whom they answer. And I just, if they would show up and do what Richie has done, then I would feel so much better. I would feel, I'd feel like I was ready to say we should go for it. But I don't feel that way. But I love this team. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other public comment, council comments. Councilmember Bierman?
I don't have a lot. I normally like to make this public policy moment, but my last few weeks have been a little busy. So, we're going to say thanks to everyone who voted today. And I wish I could say that we're done with the big issues, but we're not. So, onward we press and, hey, it's not even nine o'clock yet. You guys get to go home. So, congratulations.
No comments.
I'm going to keep mine short, too. I'm just, I'm really grateful to the city of Norman for prioritizing public transit. That was a mandate and it protected the future of public transit in this city. It was a restricted sales tax. So, next council can't decide to allocate it somewhere else. We have public transit. And the voters are very clear that it's important to them. So, thanks for everyone coming out tonight. Mr. Split, thank you for all the work you've done in the last five weeks, well, and throughout your career as well. And yeah, we're going to executive session next, so I'm going to keep it short.
I also want to thank the voters of Norman for the solid win tonight on public transit. I think public transit is such an important piece of building community and providing for so many people to have a way to get around. And I really am looking forward to the Regional Transit Authority and all of the possibilities that that future holds. And this is the first step to establish a bus system that we can all be proud of in Norman. It's been tough to have to make the transition. Our staff has absolutely risen to the occasion to make it happen. And now that our community has spoken that this is important and that we are going to move forward and try to make it as responsive of a system as it can be. And as stunning as it was for the university to just basically drop it in our lap, I think the opportunity is one that we can embrace and build a transit system that works for our community and for our residents going forward. So, thank you, Norman. I also want to thank any of the hospital employees, our healers that are here, Mr. Split, Ms. Price, all of the other people who have really taken the time to help me understand our health system in a level of detail that has been really helpful to me. So, I want to thank all of them. I also want to thank all of the residents who reached out to me about their concerns of the Porter Campus. It was a challenge to work through that puzzle and to try to see what the health system could do to bring a little bit more certainty to the plan. And I think you have definitely risen to the occasion. And I am looking forward to our January 23rd, 2020 meeting and all of the master planning that will come after that. The other thing I wanted to mention is an appointment that was made tonight to the Historic District Commission. Many of you know that one of my passions is historic preservation in Norman. And Ward four happens to be home to the three historic districts that we currently have in place in Norman. And we had an unusual level of turnover in our Historic District Commission in the last several months, one sadly due to the death of one of our valuable commission members and two other openings. We approved two others that I mentioned a few weeks ago. But tonight, the council has appointed Barrett Williamson, who is a resident of Ward two, to the Historic District Commission. And for those of you that don't know, there are specific requirements for some of the commissioners. And this opening was in particular for a professional member. And Barrett is an architect here in town, but he has extensive experience in preserving and restoring historic structures. Most recently, his architecture firm was involved with the restoration of the Casa Blanca Building on Boyd Street that the Chickasaw Nation saw fit to recognize and understand the historic character of that building and went to unusual lengths to restore it back to its former glory. And Barrett was a part of that. So, I am really pleased that he's accepted this position and I know he's going to bring a lot of value to the Historic District Commission, and that makes me really happy. So, for all of you that stayed tonight, thank you for being here. To our staff, thank you for hanging in there with us as always. And I hope you all have a good night.
Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you all for all the calls, emails, calls and emails and texts and visits. And I appreciate everything I've learned about the healthcare system. I feel like as a council member, I kind of thought I was going to be approving road projects and things like that. And I've learned about stormwater management and hospitals and marijuana. And, I mean, it's a cool job. So, thank you guys for letting me have the opportunity to do it. And, man, I feel like we won something tonight. Like, I got a little emotional because getting, I got was cranky. I was cranky when I got here because I thought, I don't know how this transportation thing's going to go. And hospital's a big deal and then we've got to, the next song we're going to sing is Kill the TIF, right? So, it's just, in the key of C. And so, anyways, I appreciate everybody that, you know, gives me input. Even sometimes when I'm so tired and cranky about it that I just don't even want to hear it anymore. I'm still listening and I'm still learning. And I get very emotional when it comes down to these things. And I'm very glad that we have a bus service in our community. And I'm glad that we have a funding source. And that's like this big weight is lifted right now. I know it's not over, but anyways, so that's it for me.
If you were listening, you heard Councilmember Patron talk about a contribution that the hospital's making and will make to the matter of homeless in this city. We have a homeless task force. Three of us are members of it. We met this morning. And the good news is, one of the pressing issues we have, particularly in this cold weather, is a warming shelter, a place where homeless can go and get out of the elements. And we made great progress, thanks primarily to our city manager, our chief of police and city legal, in identifying a place that we hope to have up and running in the very near future. That's a big deal. Just another bit of evidence, though, of the contribution that Norman Regional makes in this community. There'll be more details forthcoming. I don't want to go too far in terms of the details, but it's a giant step. But it's a step towards what I hope will be sometime in the future, a permanent day facility that the homeless can go to, replicating something that Oklahoma City operates and has for a number of years. More to come on that. And that, if we do it right, could easily turn into a warming shelter in the cold weather, just simply by adding some security. But more to come. On the subject of homeless, one of the things that we have been doing now for quite some time and city plans and the city police are primarily responsible, but we do a homeless expo. And the next one is the 21st of this month, a week from Thursday, I think, at the library on the third floor. And it's a place where the homeless are offered opportunities to get birth certificates, driver's license updates, social security claims, learn about other things that are available to them. It's primarily for the homeless. I will be there. Others up here may be. But it's a worthwhile exercise. And if you're not doing anything during that timeframe, you might stop by and see a good thing in action. I attended the veterans' ceremony on Sunday and was really warmed by it. As a veteran, I appreciate the time and effort spent in putting it together, both from the Veterans Committee that coordinated the thing. But I have to say hats off to Parks and half off, hats off to the police for their contributions in making this happen. Mayor Clark showed up, came out of her sick bed to be there, and so hats off to you as well. It really mattered to me and I think it mattered to the people there. After the ceremony, and I'll be very quick about this, but what really warmed my cockles was that a mother and two little kids came up to me, impressed with my jacket perhaps. But were you in the Air Force? And I said, yes. And the nine-year-old, "I want to be a bomber pilot." And then his older brother, who's two years older, "I want to be a fighter pilot." And we talked for 20 minutes. These kids are so eager, just want to take on the world. And it really warmed my heart to be able to talk to those kids. And I got more out of that 20 minutes than I think the whole rest of the ceremony. Nothing personal. So, it was a well-done event. I thank everybody that had anything to do with it. And next year, I really committed to any and all of you to participate. And one last thing, as the others have thanked you, so do I. I really appreciate your attendance, your interest, your patience with us as we muddle through these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Along the lines of Veterans Day, I would just mention that I recently started watching the Kinburn series on Vietnam. And I am in episode four and I am absolutely blown away about what I'm learning, things that I had no idea about that were involved in that conflict. So, I highly recommend it to everybody. And I do want to thank everybody that's here tonight, everybody that's watching at home as well and paying attention to what's going on in your local government. We make some very big decisions, as the mayor mentioned, that directly impact your daily lives, more so than any other level of government. And at the same time, we are more accessible to you than those other elected officials as well. We all have regular jobs and, you know, get 100 bucks to do this, but we do it because we care about Norman. We believe in this community and we believe that we're capable of making these big decisions. So, I appreciate all of you. I would just say that, again, to thank the voters of Norman for going out and supporting public transit today. When the city found out that OU was not going to be involved in running the system anymore, there wasn't much hesitation that I recall. We all pretty much agreed, okay, well, we're going to have to take this over. Now, we could have all said, you know, I don't think we can afford this. I don't think we can do it. We're just going to have to let it go and go without public transit service in this city until a regional transit solution can happen. And that could be three years from now. It could be five. Maybe it's 10. We don't know. But we felt, we can't do that. We can't just let the system go away. And the people in our community, many of who are the most vulnerable people, disabled, elderly, rely on that system every single day, as imperfect as it may be. There are people that rely on it every single day the way it is. And so, from my recollection, the council did not hesitate. We said, we've got to do this. We've got to find a way. And I do want to specifically recognize our Public Works Director, Sean O'Leary, because we tasked him. We tasked him with doing something that was really, what we found out was really unheard of in the whole United States. Transitioning an existing transportation system from one longstanding operator to another was pretty much unheard of. And it was very complicated because there's a lot of federal funding involved. There were a lot of assets that CART owned that were paid for by federal dollars. Those federal dollars that they were able to use were because of the city of Norman. So, a lot had to be worked out in that transition. And our goal the entire time was, we have to make sure that the system continues to run. We can't have a gap. We can't go two weeks or a month without service while we transition. It has to continue running all the time. And thankfully, from what I understand, the fixed route buses have continued to run as they're supposed to. We've seen some problems with the paratransit service. I think a lot to do with the fact Embark has a different scheduling system and a whole different operation than what CART did. And so, that's been difficult. They've had a hard time hiring more drivers for that specific purpose. But I think they're getting there. Things are starting to stabilize. And I believe this vote today, the approval of these funds, gets us there to stabilize the system, which has, again, been our goal, to stabilize and maintain what we have for those that rely on it. And once that is accomplished, we can work on how we're going to improve the system and make it more efficient and hopefully even expand it in the future. So, I'm really proud of Norman voters for coming together and supporting this. It was very important. It was very important. And I can promise you, as long as I'm sitting here, we're not gonna let you down. We're gonna do what we said we're gonna do. Thank you.
I would also like to express my gratitude to Norman voters. I would also like to thank everyone who sits on this dais and in our city staff. Thank you, as always, for putting up with us and for sticking it out with us, as well as everybody here who came tonight for the Norman Regional vote. And I appreciate you guys and your diligence and your hard work. And I'm really glad that it passed unanimously tonight. That was pretty awesome. Sometimes you see some different action up here, where we go back and forth quite a bit, but tonight was really good. I feel like, I feel very proud of our city council. I feel very proud of our city. I'm very grateful to everyone up here and their time and their sacrifice and for their service. And thank you to our veterans in the city of Norman. Thank you, Councilmember Scanlon. And anybody else in the crowd. So I'm very appreciative. And I'm glad you brought up homelessness, too. I received a few emails from some constituents in Sutton Wilderness, and we have some issues out there. And what I find is that, and we just established the ad hoc committee for, the homeless ad hoc committee. And I'm, like I said last time, I'm excited to see what comes out of that because I don't think, I think that there is a fear of homeless people because of the stigma, but it's oftentimes also met with sympathy. And that's what I get from the emails that I was reading today. People are kind of afraid, but they're also very sympathetic. And, you know, they're worried because it's getting cold now, and they're worried about fires, and they're worried about, you know, the environment in Sutton. And so I hope that we can work together on something concrete, you know, maybe something, some sort of facility in the new Porter Campus area in a few years. I think that, was it last year? I believe that the previous mayor announced that we had almost eradicated veteran homelessness in our city. And I think that's an accomplishment, that's something we can be proud of. But we do have so much more work to do. So that's what I would love to see us tackle next, after November 26th. Hopefully, I feel like Anthony is just like starting to feel a little bit of relief, you know, that our public transit, him and Sean, our public works director, feeling a little bit of relief over there. And I hope to provide even, or hope we can provide even more relief here in a few weeks and balance our budget and do what we said we were gonna do for our citizens. Because they came through for us tonight, and I'm so grateful, so, 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 so grateful that people did that. And my last comment is just gonna be about kind of all of this, you know? We have on the ward pages on Facebook, they are, what's the best word? Tomultuous? That's the best word I could come up with at this time. Exciting, perhaps? And so, but it's really challenging. And I want to thank all of the counselors up here who, and the mayor, who put their time and effort into trying to get the vote out by going on social media because it's a very dark place sometimes. It's, you know, a great way to find information and share information, but it's also a really easy way to share misinformation and to fall into this just deep, dark abyss, basically. And it's been really challenging for me personally. Sometimes I put something up and it does not go well for me. And then I'm up late. Yeah, I know. And so, and I thank you for your post that you put up last week and Allison, or Councilmember Patron, for the one I saw you put up today and just a bunch of nope's. But here's the thing, you know, you see all these comments online and we are really, you know, putting ourselves out there. We're doing some, sometimes, you know, thankless jobs. And so I appreciate that, even though like we see this sort of vocal majority or vocal minority online, that our people, like our Norman citizens, came out today and despite what they may have been following online, despite what they may have been seeing, they came out and they put their trust in us. And I don't want to let them down. I don't think any of us want to let our constituents down. Oh, and I'm very proud of Ward 8. Shout out to Ward 8 because the public transit vote passed overwhelmingly by about 65 percent, I would say. Some places it was 70, some places, the one lower place it was about 50 something, but it still passed there. So shout out to Ward 8. You guys came through. Very proud. That's all. Thank you and good night.
All right. I also want to thank our veterans here in Norman for their service and congratulate Parks and Recreation and the Veterans Parade Committee on that wonderful event. And if you didn't know, we have a beautiful memorial in Reeves Park for our Cleveland County veterans. And if you are a veteran and don't have your name listed on that, please contact Parks and Recreation and we will get that taken care of. Another shout out to Kim Schooler's 4th grade at Truman Elementary. You know how to throw in a assembly to celebrate veterans. I was very impressed. But, I'm gonna say it again, great cities provide great public transportation. Congratulations, Norman! And yes, Councilmember Beerman got to announce it, but I think we've all dreamt about it and had it in our hearts. And we will announce it in our own ways because this is our victory as a city. And we know that we're looking towards the future. And it's not just about public transportation, it's about regional transportation, it's about sustainability, it's about accessibility, it's about equity, all of those things. It's about the economy. That's what public transportation is. And Councilmember Patron, you're right, we have a mandate now. And by the unanimous vote for Inspire Health, we have a mandate for being forward-thinking with healthcare in the city of Norman. It is a new dawn in Norman, Oklahoma. You have a passionate council who does the work, puts in the hours, asks the hards questions and makes it happen. I am so inspired for the future of this city. Yes, there are tough issues, but we don't back down from it. We're not afraid from it. And so thank you, everyone on this dais, for your hard work. Enjoy these tasty pretzels from a local business. That's right. Okay, all right. With that, let's head to executive session. Item 48, adjourning into an executive session as authorized by Oklahoma statutes, Title 25, Section 307b4, to discuss possible litigation associated with the University North Park Tax Increment Finance District. I will entertain a motion to adjourn out of the city council meeting and convene into an executive session.
So moved.
Second. The motion on the floor is to adjourn out of the city council meeting and convene into an executive session. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been adjourned out of the city council meeting, convenes to executive session, passes unanimously.
Councilmembers, you may move to the study session room.